Want to end? All right, we all set to start?
Good evening, welcome to our housing workshop. I believe we're also on Zoom for those people to tune in. I'm gonna, at this point, I'm Becky Brink, City Mayor, and I'm gonna turn this over to our city manager, Steve Buck, and he's gonna kinda walk us through stuff, and we'll be having many presentations tonight, and then we'll come back around to Steve again. Take it away, Steve.
Okay. So, thank you for all coming. This is the Fourth Annual Housing Forum, where we talk about all things housing for our city. Again, I'm Stephen Buck, City Manager here in Sanford. As you see on this welcome slide, we're gonna be talking about a... This year's examination on housing and housing activities is very broad. We'll address the continuum of housing stock, construction and progression. It will focus on homeless... It will not focus on homelessness, but rather on the addition of housing stock within our city now that is being accomplished. You will have presentations tonight on the continuum of housing. We're gonna do a year-end review. We'll look at what codes and planning has done permitting on. We have a local developer perspective here this evening. The Land Bank will report out on the activity that the Land Bank has incurred over this past year. Sanford Housing Authority is here on their activity. We're gonna have some information on affordability and resources. We're gonna have a wrap-up on how tax increment financing has been used over this past year. And, for the first time, we have housing data over the last five years, and we're trying to relate that to a study that RKG has done for the city on economic development and housing, and how that relates to the work that's been ongoing. So, we've had this... There we go. We've had this information before, but this really speaks to why housing is so important to our city. And before I get into this timeline, I want to remind everybody that housing is both a noun and a verb, right? It can be this physical structure that houses somebody, but it's also the act of getting somebody into that structure and keeping them there. So, please think about that. I think that's the most applicable comment as far as the timeline is concerned, that it's both a noun and a verb. So, we started back in 2012. In the budget process, there was a recognition that a third of our residents live in rental units, and at that time, the rental units comprised just 11% of the overall valuation in the community, and that the average age of that rental... Of that housing stock that had been converted to rental, 78% of those units were built 1908, pre-1908. Pretty staggering amount. Statistics, and the average value per unit was $43,000, and that the single-family residential homes in our community made up 68% of our taxable base. By 2016, the city council had created, and we hired a position of community development. They started to examine codes and staff and the needs there. We examined the age and condition of the housing stock. We recognized there were a large number of deficient rental units and poor stewardship, and the budget programs pending for the next fiscal year started to reflect these observations. Also, in 2016, we did our first use of tax increment financing. I'll explain that later tonight, what tax increment financing is. We did our first tax increment financing for the St. Ignatius project, which is the former St. Ignatius High School. That was actually a housing TIF that was done with the state of Maine through Maine State Housing. And we also, in that first year, did our first economic TIF towards housing, and the individuals here are gonna present tonight on a different project. But, working on that project, Marlin Hall, which is the 55-plus older housing units in Springvale, it really set the template on how to use tax increment financing, how to look at the revenue-to-debt service, and make that applicable for those but-for cases of... But-for the fact that the tax increment financing economic incentive was put in there, the project would not likely have moved forward. In 2017, the Land Bank was established. That was to get at those dangerous and hazardous buildings that had not... Codes were not able to get to by themselves. It... A rental registration program went into effect that year. A vacant building registration went into effect that year. Two additional code officers were hired for the implementation and enforcement of that. And to date, 95 properties have been addressed under that format. Homeless Task Force was established in 2019. Our police department, actually, our chief... Our now-chief was the sole individual working on that at that time, working with people that were unhoused out on the street, making that person-to-person contact. We established a task force of partners with the city, the police department, the general assistance, Sanford Housing, York County Shelter Program, and York County Community Action Program, NAS on Health, and a multitude of service providers came together to start forming our homeless task force and talk about housing. So, housing as a verb. The first resource hub was put in place, and the police department worked to establish a mental health unit to incorporate social workers into our police department. By 2019, the Sanford Housing Authority, the city partnered with the Housing Authority for cooperative inspections on rental units, rehabilitation of housing using the former housing neighborhood stabilization funds, and addressing the unhoused using housing navigation started to become further coordinated. By 2020, we're into COVID. This is where the partnerships really came into play, and were really strengthened during COVID. If there's anything positive that came out of COVID, I would say it's the partnerships and the cooperation that we mustered during that time period. So, again, York County Community Action, York County Shelter Program, Sanford Housing, General Assistance, and others. We started providing emergency housing resources. A lot of people became unhoused during COVID because of their uncertain economic status. Coordination of case management and housing navigation, we increased the coordination all through the creation of the Homeless Task Force that's ongoing to this day. Mental health unit in the police department was formalized. The unit expanded to two full-time officers. We had our first-time options clinician in there. And then we set about hiring our first-time clinician responder. And we still have that position. And they were put in place to assist with the street outward... Street outreach work. Making contact with people where they are, where they were unhoused, making that contact in the street, assigning resources to them for those that would receive the assistance. Then in 2023, we're hit with a new wave of need for housing. Again, as a verb, we had an influx of new mainers. We increased our partnerships yet again with all of the same partners that I listed earlier. Coordinated case management came into play, and I know I'm very proud of the work that all of the people that are around this room did in that first night, when we hit with about 160 people that were unhoused, and we had everybody housed by 10 o'clock that night. It was a Friday afternoon, offices were closed, and by 10 o'clock, everybody was sheltered in the process, so... By, ultimately, 2023, the state of Maine, they are in a concerted course to pass as much legislation as possible to try and address the deficiencies of housing across the state. One of the major bills they passed was LD 2003. That started to address housing densities, pushing that statewide. We already had good housing density elements. We already had accessory dwelling units in our codes. We had most of the elements that were in 2003, absent some of the changes for parking reductions that we had to do. But the city quickly adapted to those statewide changes. By 2024, again, addressing actively the need for housing. There was a large encampment off in Heritage Crossing. The city adopted the 19 strategies to address encampments put forward by the U.S. Interagency Council on Homelessness, and that encampment was closed. There was a major resource hub that wrapped around that. Anybody that would take resources, they became housed. So, we had a number that went to the shelter, some that went into treatment, and then others were permanently housed directly from the encampment. Also, in 2024, the city worked with the Sanford Housing Authority. The start of the conversation is still ongoing, working with Maine State Housing Authority to establish a 30-unit housing first within our community. We also had 27 units of 55-plus workforce housing. The former Springville Courthouse, that's in a bit of limbo right now, but still working on that happening there or at another location. And we also have recently went through in '24 an examination of possibly converting the Lafayette School that was closed as a school, as a daycare center, but the funding sources were not aligned to be able to achieve that. Housing starts. We continue to hit record numbers in building permits and units being created. I know every day, the code enforcement is under a tremendous load, trying to keep up with what's taking place there. There's been a tremendous amount of private development and renovation... Renovation of properties, construction of new properties of all types. And many of these projects are now showing the examples of that increased densities. I'm seeing units built on lots now to a density that I thought that I would never see in our community. As far as pending development, in '24, the city and the sewer district collaborated for an RFP for the Stent and Trust Mill. That RFP was responded to. Chenberg holds the purchase and sales on that. They're continuing down that path, and they continue through the planning process as far as permitting that in the future. We had 36 units of workforce housing and 36 units of market-rate housing. Those are directly in the downtown here. You can see those projects under construction, and one of those is gonna present here this evening. And we have a new owner for the Sanford Trust Bank Building, which is looking at both commercial and residential development in there as well. Also, on the continuum of housing, we had the creation and expansion of the housing, the unhoused, across broad partnerships between the city and agencies, importantly, with private developers. And the city continued to explore all options to increase quality housing options. 2025, bringing us to this year, the city has adopted the five strategies to address individuals at risk of being unhoused. So, we've shifted the focus from people that were unhoused for various reasons during COVID, and such under that, to now, for the first time, getting on the prevention side of that. So, where can we muster more resources? And how does our partnership, such as the housing navigators that meet on a weekly basis, how can they better be assigned to addressing people that are in needs, that are at risk, that have never had to have services before? How do we reach out to them? How do we let them know that those services are available? RKG began a market analysis for us. You'll see some of those numbers here this evening. And we had the continued considerations for land use planning that will come forward with a comprehensive plan. We had anticipation for the continued use of tax increment financing towards housing, and we're starting to analyze that now as to what categories those should be in, and the adoptions of the state's ongoing legislative amendments, which continue... They continued in 20... The long session, and I would anticipate we're gonna see those for a period of time, yeah. So, as far as housing innovation, the city remains committed to building. On the progress that we've done to date, I will say we have been extremely progressive in that, and it really comes from the partnerships, both the private sector, the public sector, working hand-in-hand as far as the active action of housing people from a verb perspective, as well as what can we, as a city, using tax increment financing or other leveraged funding, assist the private sector in making the investments in our community for a broad spectrum of housing? So, with that, we'll start talking about the continuum of housing. I'll ask Jen Willett to come up and take the podium and present. Thank you.
Thank you for that. My name is Jen Willett. I'm the Deputy Director for Sanford Housing Authority. I'm just gonna talk briefly about the continuum of housing and go over some definitions here. So, the... It's not necessarily in a straight line, but there are different types of housing available. So, one commonly heard of or talked about is Section 8. It's also considered subsidized housing, but so is public housing. And tenants, households, you know, whether it's a family or a single adult, they're gonna pay, generally speaking, 30% of their annual adjusted gross income towards the rent, and then the subsidy will pay the difference up to the established payment standard, which is set by HUD. Affordable housing is considered, or one type is low-income housing tax credit, also often called Lytec housing. And that is generally, you know, any... You have a monitoring agency. So, like at Sanford Housing Authority, we have two Lytec properties, and those are monitored by Maine Housing Authority. So, they are generally reserved for households that fall between the 40% and 60% of the area median income. And then the rents are set on an annual basis by Maine Housing. Workforce housing is sort of those people that, you know, they make too much for subsidy support, but not enough, really, to support market-rate rents. So, those income kind of guidelines fall in the 60% to 120% of adjusted median income, and those rents are also set by Maine Housing. And then you have market rate. So, market rate has really no controls. It's more, you know, supply and demand. Private landlords or owners, and they can definitely, you know, ask what they want, and, you know, kind of depending upon the area. So, there's no real guideline surrounding that or how much somebody might pay. But they would be responsible for the full market rate rent in those units. Thanks.
Moving on to codes and planning, Jamie Cole.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Jamie Cole. I'm the Director of Codes and Planning for the city. My discussion points tonight are based upon a snapshot in time of where we've seen housing starts, occupancy permits issued, and I'll talk a little bit about a number of units approved at the planning board level. So, it's hard to... It's hard to put a snapshot in time of what is actually happening for housing in the community, because sometimes it takes six months to build a house. Sometimes it takes two years to build an apartment building. So, I'm gonna discuss all three different aspects to try to give a good picture. So, as far as occupancy permits issued, this slide is actually... I corrected it. I double-checked the numbers today. My software had a glitch. So, under four or more residential family units, it says 56. That number's actually supposed to be 142. So, essentially, you can see we have issued occupancy permits on a broad range of properties, ranging from single families, two families, three families, multifamilies, condos. And we're starting to see a rapid uptick in accessory dwelling units. And part of that is based on some legislative changes coming out of LD 2003 that made it... Sanford has always allowed accessory dwelling units. We used to call them accessory apartments. But the publicity coming out of LD 2003, I think, opened up the eyes of people saying, "Wow, we can do this." And it makes it a much more affordable option to do an ADU instead of building from scratch a whole new property. So, in the last year, we've seen six occupancy permits issued. Next year, when I stand up here, that number will be dramatically more, because, again, it takes a while to get momentum rolling. So, we'll see a much larger number next year. We've also issued about 200 units worth of building permits for units currently under construction, but not yet issued occupancy permits. And then on top of that, the planning board has issued about another 175, 180 units worth of projects approved at the planning board level, but hasn't approved the permits yet to start building. So, really, if you add up all these numbers together, we're at almost 600 units of new housing, either in the works, approved, or already occupied. That is a lot of housing for a city like Sanford in one year. That's a 12-month period. So, that shows you that Sanford is very rapidly evolving to the dramatic need of housing. And I'll be honest with you, it's not quick enough. Developers can't build quick enough. One of our local developers is gonna speak after me. I do have a couple pictures of project highlights of current, larger properties under construction. So, this is the project that our next developer is gonna talk about. This is right across from City Hall, right across from the park. This is exactly what the city needs. This is exactly what the state of Maine needs, and it's happening right here. On top of that, in Springvale, we have an old mill building currently under renovation. So, I will admit, this picture doesn't do the project justice, because it's in the very early stages of redevelopment. But this is also huge. This is a mill that was in active use up until eight months ago, and then immediately converted. It started the conversion process to residential. Sanford has a history of mill buildings sitting vacant for a little while, but the tides are changing, where now it's able to be... A developer can come in and actually do these projects and make the numbers work. That's a testament for the work that we are all doing in this city to improve the housing stock, to improve everything to do with housing. That's a tag-team effort that I believe everybody in this room and many others are... Have been working on and will continue to work on for the years to come. And then this is TPD Construction. This is the building that is completed on the other side of Aroma Joe's, also within sight of downtown Sanford's City Hall. And another project that will bring life to the downtown with now another large building and another large building under construction. It's gonna force walkability of the downtown. It's gonna force the small shops to reopen, because we have more people that need to use them. So, all these projects are huge. They're all wonderful for the city. They're all wonderful for the state. Again, they're a true testament of all the hard work being done to make it so housing can come to Sanford. And then to finish the slide, this is market-rate condos down off of Patriots Lane in South Sanford. This was a project approved back in 2005, 2006. The original developer built two for six units, and then it sat idle for about 15 years. The current developer purchased it five or six years ago, and they build them and sell them as quick as they physically can. That developer has also come in and got planning board approval to build about another 100 units worth of apartments behind the existing apartments that are currently on the top of the hill on Patriots Lane. So, by the time we finish building out the condos and another 100 units, I mean, that's an additional 150 units of residential right there in that one spot. Things are happening here. This is good. That's really all the excitement that I wanted to share.
I just wanted one comment. So, condos, I think it's great. It's home ownership opportunity. Spring Hill looks like it's having an extension as well in Springville.
Hillside Crossing in Springvale? Spring Hill, where's Spring Hill?
Spring Hill is right next to the old Metro Cass where American Security is. It almost looked like it was an extension.
So, that's Hillside Crossing.
That's gonna be... Okay.
That is also done, a development by Ken Weinstein.
Condos again, right?
Similar project started in the mid-2000s, went idle for a decade or more. And, yeah, they're building those condos out as quick as humanly possible and selling them before they're finished. So, there's a lot of activity happening.
I would encourage everybody sitting here and anyone listening to start driving around to these places. It is amazing. You look at the one you just showed one slide back, but it looks like just two little houses there. That... When you drive down in there, it's huge. There's a tremendous amount of housing down there, not just two small buildings, but it just keeps going on and on and on, and a lot more under construction, you know, down there. So, stuff is fast. You are absolutely right, Jamie. It's keeping your office very busy.
We have a busy crew.
Thank you, Jamie. I appreciate it. And the next one, a local developer perspective. Rob Rankin, he's the President of Ranko Development. And Rob is also one of our residents who has a son following in his footsteps. So, it's good to see our youth is staying here in Sanford and continuing on with stuff. So, Rob, go ahead.
Rob Rankin, President... Actually, I'm Vice President of ReinCorp.
You were demoted?
I was demoted.
Okay, well, okay, there you go. The sons come in and they take over.
I'm working harder than I ever worked, but I've been demoted. I'm here tonight representing our local company, ReinCorp. We've been in business here in Sanford and Springvale since 1986. We've done numerous projects, but tonight, we're here to talk about our newest project here across from Central Park. Central Park Residence is... It's a workforce housing project that has been a team effort with partnership with the city, economic development. I mean, we've been working on this for quite a few years now, five years or so. It all started from a night up on the... Above and Beyond, up on the town club there, looking down, saying, "Gotta do something with that piece of property." And ultimately, we ended up buying it. It was four individual lots with... Homes in just decay, falling apart. It was just a real eyesore. I thought, you know, we can do something, you know, good with this property, get some density, get some walkability in our downtown, add some streetscape, just really beautify the area. And that's how it all started. Never imagined how much of a challenge it was gonna be in the current economic environment, which was very challenging. So, this was the original proposal. 30 units in total. 10 School Street is closest to Mo's. It would be your building on the left, and then 12 School Street and 14 School Street. Currently, 10 and 12 are in construction. We expect to complete them later this year, first of the year. They'll be occupied as workforce housing. workforce housing. So the process, let's see where I was, the, we got started, had great visions, you know, even originally, we wanted to have storefronts, mixed use wasn't bankable. We went through all, all sorts of different revisions, changes, back and forth with the city, and, you know, the city worked hand-in-hand with us to make this happen, I gotta tell you. But we finally got a product that we thought would work, and again, you know, the, the economic environment was just so brutal, and then the COVID came along and made it even tougher, tariffs came along, made it even tougher, interest rates started to rise, made it even tougher. So our first attack was to work with the city and look at a TIF to close the gap. We did that, we worked well together, we put together a beautiful package. It wasn't enough, wasn't enough to make this happen. Just, the, the gap was way too big. So fast forward another two years, working with Main State Housing, we did the rural rental housing program. We were so fortunate to be selected, one of five in the state, and it truly made the project work. I have to tell you, I'm not, I don't say this lightly, that if it wasn't for our TIF, we wouldn't have been selected. It was the TIF that gave us the edge. So it was, the partnership was just so valuable, so valuable. So this is the project as it stands today. The unit to the left, the building to the left, 10 School Street, is six one-bedroom units, and the building to the right, 12 School Street, is 12 units, there are 10 one-bedroom and two two-bedrooms. Little bit of the interior look of the project itself, this is the kitchen area looking into a living area. Kitchen. These units are not being built just to get by. They're, they're very nice, they have every imaginable, tech, technology is in this building. It's got solar, it's got keyless locks, security cameras, heat pumps, it's super energy efficient, and, you know, we couldn't have done that without the help of the leverage financing from Main State Housing. Now, the partnership continues, so now we've entered into a partnership with the city to incorporate the sidewalks and the streetscape with the new Ray's Grant. So Ray's Grant's coming, we didn't want to do something that didn't match, and we certainly didn't want to do things twice and waste a bunch of money. So we were successful in working with the city to create this partnership and make this happen. What you're looking at here, the new, new lamppost that will be lining the front of School Street, and these crazy boxes that, pretty scary looking when you look at them there, but they are for planters for trees. And the idea is that the new technology is the root system won't be able to spread out and ruin the sidewalks in a matter of years. And then, at the same time, if a tree did need to be replaced, it's easily pulled out, a new tree can be put in. The sidewalks will be, I think they're about 10-foot wide, and nice granite curbs, and, you know, just give that street appeal that we've been looking for. Other, look, the pile of loam that you see there, that's actually the planters. So on top of that, the concrete base is below that, it's a granite, so what we'll see visibly is a granite planter, even though the concrete is below there. And then this is 14 School Street, and it's the, what we consider the second phase now of the project, and that is actually under construction. We are gonna do market rate there at this point because the rural housing program is no longer available, the funds are, there's very few funds out there right now to leverage another project, but we want to finish the project, so this is the start of it. We anticipate full construction to start next spring, and we're, we're very hopeful that interest rates will continue to drop and that the project will, the, the gap will close itself. We do have a, an active TIF on that section of the project, and we're hoping between the TIF and, you know, a softening economy, maybe we can pull it off and get the project fully completed by the end of '26. Let's see. That is what the buildings look like from the backside, so you're looking towards Central Park, and the back is where all the parking will be, containers, dumpsters, and such.
I thank you all.
Thank you, Rob, for that. Great presentation, too. Our next presentation is a land bank, which is just amazing also. Michelle Labrie is our assistant city manager of the city of Sanford. Take it away, Michelle.
Yes, thank you. All right. So I figured I would start just by taking a property and just walking you through the process. So before a property even goes into or under the land bank, it all starts with code enforcement. They have their first touch or their initial contact with a property owner. So obviously, they would issue a notice of violation, which is, goes against, you know, a city code or an ordinance, and we give the owner the ability to try to correct, to correct the issue, whatever it may be. They typically have 30 days to form some type of response, whether it can be rectified within that 30 days, or they would have to submit a corrective action rehabilitation plan outlining what they're gonna do and how they're gonna do it, and then what criteria codes would require them to be able to do that by taking out permits. So we have seen that some rehab plans can last up to a year or even longer, depending on the severity of the violations that they have. And just because a property would have one notice of violation doesn't automatically assume that it's gonna go into the land bank as well. So the land bank, these properties are ones that are abandoned or debilitated or just, just left with improper maintenance and are considered dangerous or a nuisance to life or property. So the land bank really looks at the worst, the worst properties that we have, and we try to make a difference that way. So if a property, for some reason, if there's no response from the land over, landowner, or they just never get their rehab plan completed, it then goes through the land bank. And at our land bank meetings, we talk about many properties every month on, on different issues that they may have. The information is funneled down to our code enforcement office, and then a property is selected to push forward into the process. So I am going to briefly just go through the process. There's a lot of steps and a lot of administrative functions that define each part of the process, and I guess the intent of the slide is just to show that these, the process is nothing that's short of, of, well, it's, it's, it can be a long process. So initially, a notice of hearing is sent to the owner, letting them know that their property is going to be held at a hearing in front of the city council. We typically give them a 30-day notice. That allows us to be able to send them the notice and as well get it in the newspaper for, for advertising. And it also allows us to be able to, you know, get the packet of information for the council to review and to consider. And then it goes before the city council for the first, for the, for the, for the hearing, and then the result is basically for them to adjudge if they declare it to be a dangerous and hazardous property or not. It then goes before the city council a second time to confirm the findings in order from the first meeting. And at that point, once that finding, findings in order is solidified, the homeowner has 30 days to submit a corrective action plan for us. Sometimes it's even the compliance division of a mortgage company that submits, submits the plan, sometimes it's the homeowner, and then sometimes we hear nothing. So this is pretty much the point in the process where we have to sit and wait. We have to sit and wait for some type of response. If the rehabilitation plan comes into play, you know, it has to be, has to be agreeable, it has to, has to be realistic that they can get it done in the timeframe allowed. They can't just say that, oh, we'll get it all done in, in five years. It has to be a realistic plan, and it does need to be approved by the city manager or So at that point, if nothing is ever done, then the city has the opportunity to go in and abate the nuisance. And this is kind of what we've done recently in the last year with 58 Pleasant Street and 8 York Street. So obviously, we want to work with the homeowners and we want them to rehabilitate their home. We don't want to have to take the steps to abate the nuisance, but we will if we need Once we've determined that we're going to abate the nuisance, then we start the bidding process. So we put the requests for proposals out to go out and do the demo, and then go through the necessary steps either at subcommittee or city council to proceed. Once that's all done, then we work on the recovery of expenses, trying to recoup the costs that the land bank has put in as part of that whole process. So, you know, start to finish, if everything plays in, in the right, in the right way, it, it can be quick, but not so, not so much. So this slide is just basically a brief slide on properties that are either, we've declared dangerous and hazardous, they're currently in demo or are part of the rehabilitation process, and these are the only ones that really I've touched in the last year. So there are many, many, many more properties that code enforcement has that have current notice of violations and possibly rehab plans that they're working on, but these are just a little brief snapshot of what we're doing. I'm gonna choose 58 Pleasant Street as a property just to highlight where it was declared dangerous in 2024, and then earlier this year, we also acquired it through foreclosure process, through the tax acquired, happened to have the demo going on at the same time, and then we recently just sold the property, and there will be either a single-family or a multi-unit being built on that property. So the land bank does good for the community on giving back. We're trying to, you know, get these buildings that are in bad shape and, and get property owners to take pride in their property and, and get them, get them back to looking good. We've also been lucky to partner with Habitat for Humanity as well. City has a strong partnership with them, and they've, well, our city has benefited from some of these land bank properties being sold to Habitat for Humanity. So this slide is at the site of 3 Beaver Hill Road, where they are putting four single-family homes for families there, and then five more homes are planned on Island Avenue. And so we've got some photos of the new homes on Beaver Hill. And I wanted to just touch a little bit on the tax acquired. Sometimes land bank properties then turn into tax-acquired properties as well, so I wanted to just kind of list that these are still giving back to the community. Some tax-acquired homes are on the left, we're actually closing on the property at the 299 Alfred Road on Thursday, so that will go back into available, available property for the community. And 12 Marshbrook Crossing is still for sale, and we should be closing on the Malcolm Ave daylight, daylight potential subdivision, October 14th now. So we're getting there, slowly but surely, we're getting there. All the properties on the right are land bank homes that are either homes that will go on the market or lots of land that are currently pending that we're working on to And then everyone likes a good success story, so we've got some photos in here for you just to show you some of the land bank's impact. This is 41 Emerson Street, so we have a before and after picture. This property was sold earlier this year after it was completely remodeled, interior and And this is 58 Pleasant Street, so we have the before picture, then the after, as it's just a, a blank canvas, so to speak. Actually closed on this yesterday, so we're expecting construction, hopefully next year, on a multi-unit or single-family home. This is 254 Sunset Road, if you recall, this went before the council last year for a dangerous and hazardous declaration. We are working with the compliance division of the mortgage company, so the rehab is in progress. We're actually looking at, what, seven, eight months now? So this is one of those ones that's gonna take a while, but eventually, it will be a single-family home that will be out there on the market into our inventory. So we have 26 Garrish Drive. This is a declaration for a dangerous and hazardous property. Demolition is to be scheduled, and the property is currently in foreclosure. So however long that foreclosure process actually takes, eventually, it will be in the city's inventory for, available for future development. And then the same with 8 York Street. That was declared, we went through the demolition process. It's a beautiful lot right here in town, and the property is currently in foreclosure. And lastly, just want to touch on the Community Solutions Grant. So this is something that kind of came on my radar just within the last month, and, and while it's not land bank, it can overlap into the land bank. So this is a partnership that the city has with the main housing authority. We have a revolving fund. It initially was going to expire next year, but we received a two-year extension, so we have it until 2028. So the purpose is, is to have a property, rehabilitate it, and then sell it to a family that has less than or equal to 80% of the area median income. So I'm working with Diane on that, and hopefully, we can get some more properties turned over within the next couple of years to really help the community there.
Michelle, thank you very much. I appreciate that. Next up, we have Sanford Housing Authority again, Jen Willett, come on down.
I've been at Sanford Housing Authority for almost six years now, and prior to starting there, I used to work at the York County Shelter Program. I was there for 30 years as the clinical director for a, a large chunk of that time. And I think that, you know, community engagement and housing opportunities and the support and resources that are available, like, I lived in Springvale, my parents both went to Nassau College, I mean, you know, so I have roots certainly in this community, and it's just, it's been really great listening to what everybody is talking about. So I'm gonna talk specifically about Sanford Housing and some of the things that we've embarked on. We're very, very busy. This is, this year at the National Night Out, this is some of the employees for Sanford Housing Authority. So we have our intake specialists there, one of our occupancy specialists, the admin assistant, and I think you might all know the executive director, the one with the ponytails. So just gonna talk a little bit, or go over briefly our mission statement at Sanford Housing, talk some about the projects and properties that Sanford Housing Authority owns, highlight what streamlined voluntary conversion is and what that meant and means kind of moving forward, federal program housing choice vouchers, housing navigation team, and, and talking about the home for good. So the mission statement really for Sanford Housing is to provide safe, quality, and affordable housing for eligible populations in need of assistance, and to also promote opportunities for growth and development. for eligible populations in need of assistance and to also promote opportunities for growth and development to residents as well as our community. I think that there is often, and I'll say even when I first started working at Sanford Housing, I thought the same was true also. That Sanford Housing was an arm of or a branch of or a part of the city of Sanford. That actually is is not true. We are an independent public agency. And Sanford Housing Authority is governed by a board of commissioners. There's seven members on that board. And one member of the board is a tenant or a participant in one of the housing programs owned by Sanford Housing. This just highlights really the the households that we take care of. And if you do a little bit of the math there, you know, and then sort of, well, three-person household on the average. You know, there's well over 2,000 individuals that fall under the umbrella of Sanford Housing Authority. A bulk of those are in the Housing Choice Voucher Program, also known as Section 8. So I mentioned a little bit earlier, those households pay roughly 30% of their annual adjusted income. So we have 719 Housing Choice vouchers. Those, a lot of them are with landlords in our community. We have nine towns that are part of the jurisdiction. Sanford and Springville being two of them, but there are additional towns in the surrounding area that fall under us as well. Village View is a two-building property over in Springville on Pleasant Street. There are 40 units there and Village View is for age 62 and older. Similar to the Housing Choice Voucher Program, the tenants there pay 30% of their adjusted income in rent. The Maples and Mayflower right across the the road there from each other on Mayflower Drive down and south Sanford. Those are both Lytec or the low-income housing tax credit properties. And we have 26 units at the Maples, 35 at the Mayflower. Those are both 55 and older projects. And then roughly a year ago, we converted our two public housing properties, which is Sunset Tower, which is the high-rise on Main Street and East Side Acre, which is Bates, Bowdoin, Emery, the Family Project. Those were converted from public housing over to the Section 8 or HCV program. I'm going to talk a little bit more about that and what that kind of means for the families and for 55 and older at Sunset Tower. Property taxes. So I think that's another area that maybe, you know, the average individual might not understand that, you know, Sanford Housing Authority, through the properties that we own, we pay roughly for 25, 26, $184,000 in property taxes. The streamlined voluntary conversion, I just touched on that. The thing that I think remarkable about this is, you know, public housing, it didn't really allow anybody to move beyond it. So you you absolutely could see somebody move into, for example, Sunset Tower, the high-rise on Main Street. And because it's subsidized or was subsidized, there would be no ability for the individual to move up or move out. They don't necessarily earn, well, they don't. Under public housing, you don't earn or or qualify for a Section 8 voucher, which ultimately then becomes portable, right? So if somebody is on a Section 8 voucher for a year, they are then able to take that voucher anywhere in the United States and utilize it. So it it does a number of things. Not only it gives them more freedom and flexibility to, you know, relocate maybe where family might be or they have a different job or, you know, things like that. But it also then frees up the unit of housing in our community again, as opposed to it being stagnant, you know, with individuals being in the apartment for 30 or more years. This is a picture of East Side Acre, you know, the the Family Project on Emory Bates and Bowdoin, oh, in Yale. Oh, in Harvard, okay. There's 49 apartments over there and they're it's row housing and they are two, three and four bedroom units. So again, since paid 30% of their annual adjusted income. And then basically it's the Section 8 program that pays the difference on their behalf. Here's the high-rise on Main Street. Most everybody knows that. I remember that as a little kid counting it. Every time I go by, I count in the levels, you know, that it was the biggest building I'd ever seen. There's 72 units there and they are all either efficiency units. We have a handful of efficiencies, which are still, I think, fairly decent sized units. And then there are the remaining are all one-bedroom. Here's a little kind of comparison, which, you know, you'll have your packet. So I'm not going to go over each one of these. But a couple of things that I think are noteworthy, you know, public housing on the left-hand side compared to the Housing Choice Voucher. So, you know, when you look at the income limits, right, number seven, under public housing. So public housing also had a higher income limit. So people, you know, one-person household, you can see that's the income limit for public housing this year in our area. So they can make up to $54,000, excuse me, dollars and be eligible. On the Section 8 side of the world, comparatively, you can see that that is capped at $37,450 for one person. So it definitely caters more to, not saying that the public housing side aren't individuals in need, but certainly, you know, when we talk about subsidy and who needs subsidy, you know, these are individuals who are exceptionally low income and, you know, an ability to pay anywhere near, you know, even even sometimes in a tax credit property is going to be a challenge for them at that level of income. And then number eight I did touch on already, but, you know, that it does, the Section 8 or the HCV Housing Choice Voucher with Sunset and East Side Acre promotes kind of movement, not only movement up and potentially off. And we do have individuals who it is a stepping stone. That's the goal, right? That it is a stepping stone and, you know, they insert themselves in their community perhaps and, you know, either get back to work or go to school and, you know, gain some employment opportunities and then, you know, kind of move along or move out. So it allows turnover, which is a good thing for sure for this community. A housing navigation team. So in February of 24, so we'll be heading two years coming up. You know, there's been a lot of work in our community, certainly around homelessness and unhoused situations. And I think that when you look at some of the the money that is earmarked for individuals or families, they have to be literally homeless. And there certainly are, you know, those that are literally homeless and we see them at Sanford Housing also. But then there are also those that wouldn't necessarily fall into the HUD definition of chronic homelessness, but are still homeless nonetheless, right? And so we started collaborating and you have already mentioned the partners here. I feel like it is the same partners, you know, that always kind of collectively get together and try to problem solve. And so this housing navigation team is no different. It was started by Sanford Housing Authority and has grown over time to include a number of different organizations. And we get together on a regular basis. When we formed the group, we were meeting on a weekly basis. And then when we didn't have a lot of movement, we sort of pulled back a little bit, but now we're back into meeting once a month. And then, you know, as things kind of ramp up, we'll go back to, you know. So it ups and flows depending upon what's going on in the moment. But these are the the providers who come to the table and we all tend to touch these households, right? And so it's it's made up. It's the Sanford School Department, York County Community Action. You're getting here from Carter when I'm done here. Suites or Opportunity Alliance, the hub coordinator for York County comes to that. Massabesic School Department, Quality Housing Coalition. And we just, you know, I facilitate the meeting. I maintain sort of a consultation list of individuals in need. And then, you know, if we have a resource, so it could be a landlord that has a rental unit available and is willing to, you know, work with a family that may or may not have a voucher, you know. So it's not always tied to a voucher. It's not always tied to, you know, availability for a voucher. It just sort of depends on the individual's situation. And then we try and, you know, navigate it and make the connection. We are certainly, when it comes to the voucher, governed by the payment standards. Those are set by HUD and adopted by the Housing Authority on an annual basis. I think those are, yep, right here. You can see, you know, if you talk about like market rent, I mean, the Section 8 payment standard is not near market rent. A one-bedroom unit, that's 1312. That's with all utilities included. Two-bedroom, 1616 and and so on. So, you know, if a landlord doesn't want to pay electricity, then their rent to owner actually goes below that because the utility allowance is given for the electricity. So we do a lot of outreach with landlords and trying to certainly educate them on how the program works. We do have some incentives available for Section 8 landlords. I don't have that number. I don't know if you do, but we have the money is not Sanford Housing's money, but Sanford Housing is reimbursed when we pay the landlord incentive money out. And we've done repair grants for owners. I've had owners replace their roof on their home. I've had owners put in a new heating system, new flooring, new countertops, new appliances. So it's it's a benefit, you know, when you talk about kind of some of the other work that's happening. You know, the the incentive money also assists in some real kind of tangible things that benefit the homeowner. Impact since formation. So since February of 2024, through the work of that group, we have housed 142 individuals. 29 of them went into Sanford Housing Authority property with a subsidy. 52 of them were contracted project-based voucher units. So what that means is Sanford Housing Authority has a number of contracts with local agencies. Some examples of that, Caring Unlimited, York County Community Action, Linden Apartments, St. Ignatius, York County Shelter Program, CHOM over in Springvale. So project-based voucher means that it is a Section 8 voucher, but it is attached to the actual unit. So the individual or family moving in has to qualify for Section 8. But, you know, if they moved in and then six months later said, oh, it's time for me to move out and I'm taking a voucher, they don't take a voucher. That voucher is there to support the organization and support the ability certainly for the organization to house individuals or families. A number of them do have a preference for homeless households. So 52 people did that. 23 received a Sanford Housing Authority homeless preference voucher. So Sanford Housing Authority has 10 designated vouchers, Section 8 vouchers, reserved for homeless households. If they are housed successfully for a year, we will transition that over to, we're just calling it a regular Section 8 voucher because we're so creative. But so they'll transfer over to a regular voucher, which will then free up a homeless voucher again to keep those 10 kind of rotating around. So 23, that doesn't mean 23 vouchers. That means 23 individuals. 22, wonderfully so, their name came up. We were issuing some vouchers and they had applied. I could not stress enough, people need to apply and get on the list. And even if it seems like it's a ridiculous waste of time, the sooner they're on the list, the sooner, you know, it's going to happen. So these 22, their name came up when Sanford Housing had vouchers to issue. Separate from homeless preference vouchers, these are kind of state-of-the-art, regular Section 8 off the State of Maine centralized waiting list for a Section 8. And then 16 were housed with another subsidy. So, for example, Shalom House, which is located primarily in Portland, but they operate the BRAP, which is Bridging Rental Assistance Programs, the BRAP subsidy. They also administer Shelter Plus Care, which is now called something else. They renamed it. But for York County, even though they're in Portland, they administer those vouchers. And so we had certainly some individuals that the housing navigation that was provided to them was we connected them to a landlord that we were aware of that had a rental unit available, but Sanford Housing didn't supply the subsidy for that. Home for Good is one of our newer endeavors and wicked exciting. So Home for Good is a evidence-based, actually proven approach of Housing First to end homelessness. And I double-checked myself because, and I'm right. I went to the original creator of Housing First. His name is Sam Tocembras. And he started it in New York City and I was fortunate enough to hear him speak and talk about this innovation back in 1992. And, you know, he was certainly eons ahead of as far as coming up with this strategy. And it was certainly proven successful and it kind of has really, you know, spread throughout the United States since then. So Sanford Housing Authority is going to construct, build, well, we're not going to do the actual building, but, you know, 30 units of Housing First. And so the the primary difference about it is, you know, a lot of times housing might be, well, you know, we can move you into housing, but you have to go to treatment first. Or we could move you into housing, but you should probably take some medication and get a little stable before we do that. And Housing First is really the opposite of that. That, you know, how how stable is someone really going to be able to get and get to a psychiatric appointment or go on a daily basis to treatment when they don't have a place to lay their head at night or when they're worrying about what they're gonna or how they're gonna cook their next meal or? So Housing First is, you know, you give them the housing stability and then people are more likely to receive and pursue help and assistance for some of the other things. It's been proven to reduce high-cost utilization. So where do people go when it's really cold out? Well, they're going to the emergency room, which costs everybody a lot of money. They're maybe going to a crisis bed. Again, costs a lot of money compared to what a housing kind of subsidy voucher, you know, payment standard for one bedroom being $1,300 a month. And if that reduces one crisis unit stay, you're ahead of the game. Never mind everything else, right? So these are the partners on the Home for Good. So clearly the city of Sanford has been a big component of that and in support and advocacy. Avesta Housing, you know, as far as the developer. York County Community Action is going to be the 24-hour onsite service provider. So Housing First is staffed, not in people's apartments, but within the within the building. There is somebody onsite 24 hours a day to assist with any concerns that might come up. First County Foundation. So that's a relatively new newly-formed group through York County government. I'm I've been a clinical consultant for York County Government on the Recovery Center that is under construction currently and is set to open late summer of 2026. And so a number of those individuals, you know, will be looking at some point for housing. And, you know, well, you can't guarantee anything, but it it's not a long shot really to or a far reach to think about, you know, somebody who goes into a Housing First, let's say, and, you know, they stabilize and say, you know what, I think I really do want to do something about my my drinking problem or I want to reduce my drug use or, you know, whatever it may be. Get them into that Recovery Center. Get them into that Recovery Center, they complete treatment, which there can be up to 27 months if necessi- or, sorry, not 27 months, 18 months, sorry, if necessary. And then they might not want to return to Housing First, right? Because it's not a requirement that people are clean and sober in the Housing First model. So, they're going to free up a Housing First for another chronically homeless individual and then they might move into housing Sanford Housing has or with a community landlord or something like that. So, it's, it's great how everything just really overlaps and, and ties together. This is a proposed location, which is on Heritage Crossing. It will be project-based vouchers, which I talked about earlier. So, individuals will pay 30% of their annual adjusted income towards rent. They will definitely have a typical Sanford Housing Authority lease. They will be required to follow the parameters of the lease, you know. So, if somebody has a drinking problem, it can't spill out over into that community, right? They can't be banging on other people's doors and, you know, so that kind of stuff exists. It's not free-for-all, but it's not requiring, you know, that they are fully abstinent either. This is just a picture of a Housing First that was built in Portland. It's called Houston Commons. A couple of our staff actually toured it today. This is a beautiful building. We're probably not going to be quite as fancy as that. Fancy-ness costs a lot of money, but it's a gorgeous building. And, you know, they've been successful. I think they have three or four Housing First projects now in Portland. And then this is just a, a picture of the Recovery Center that is under construction. And then they're also doing a first responder training center, which is sort of in the back of that, way in the back end of this slide. But, the Recovery Center is going to have the first detox beds York County has ever seen in the 35 years I've been in the field of addiction. So, we'll have detox beds there, intensive outpatient, short-term residential, midterm, outpatient, medication-assisted treatment, case management, medication management, the whole continuum under one roof, which should make a huge impact. There's 58 beds there in that, that facility, which is huge. And that's it for me.
Jen, thank you very much. Our next presentation is Affordable and Resources. Incarta Friend, he is the CEO of York County Community of Action Corps.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you so much for holding the workshop and for including us. I just want to talk a little bit about affordability and resources and actually take us back to the slide that Jen presented earlier with the housing continuum and subsidized housing and affordable housing and workforce housing. And talk a little bit about who are the folks that are finding homes in that housing and otherwise who might not be able to afford housing. And so, I think if you think about, for example, an elderly couple that might have been living in Sanford their whole lives, who may because of, are on fixed income and because of inflation are not able to afford housing or make ends meet. So, it's a good example of, of folks who otherwise would not be able to find housing but for that housing. It also could be a new family. Could be a husband and wife that have just moved in with a new kid, both working, but again, the, the pay of those jobs are not able to keep up with the market and what the market's going to cost. Or could be a young, a young person that's moving to town, a young woman or a young man who is making Sanford their home and again, with a new job is not able to pay what a full market rate would cost them to be able to live here. And there's some really good data that can help understand that. And this is ALICE data, which I think the city manager has shared with you before, that really takes a look at making ends meet. What does it mean to have a basic household survival budget? And folks that then are living above that line and can afford housing and folks that are living below that line and would not be able to afford housing but for the types of housing we're talking about tonight. So, in Sanford, 50% of households, so there's about 9,300 households, do not have enough income at the month to make ends meet. So, they do not, are not making a basic survival budget. And so, those are households that depend on things like subsidized housing or affordable housing or workforce housing to be able to afford housing. What is in a basic survival budget are just, it's just what it sounds like. It's housing, it is food, it is transportation, it is healthcare. And for families with kids that are both, with both parents or their parent is working, it is childcare. So, it's, and then it's also technology because access to the internet these days is essential for things like work. So, that's it. It's the basic things that folks need in order to get by. And so, the dollar amounts that are in a basic household budget are up on the screen now. And these, these actually are not for Sanford, they're for York County. There's no Sanford-specific data, but it gives you a flavor of what somebody needs a single adult would need in their basic survival budget or adult and a child, two adults, two adults and two children in childcare, which is 110,000 for a basic needs budget. And then again, two adults age 65-plus at $67,000. So, 50% of the households in Sanford are making amounts below these basic household budgets and again, would not be able to afford housing but for the housing types we've been talking about tonight. They also, folks that are struggling to pay for housing or to make ends meet, depend on other resources to help stretch their dollars as far as they can go. And so, I'm just going to give some examples of some of the resources that we provide at York County Community Action. And the one that, some of these are going to be some that you're very familiar with. For example, access to financial supports like heating assistance. So, heating assistance will help folks that can't pay their heating bill at the end of the month. Getting that dollars in their pockets helps them pay rent or put food on their table and stretch their dollars further. Transportation is very expensive for a lot of folks. The cost of owning a vehicle, insuring a vehicle and keeping and maintaining a vehicle is a lot of money. So, for folks that are stretching their dollars, they take advantage of public transportation. We offer a lot of public transportation here in Sanford. The Sanford Transit, which is the route that just goes around and people hop on and off. We helped about 14,000 riders with Sanford Transit last year. The WAVE is our service that picks people up at the front door and takes them to work. And we helped, about 70% of our WAVE ser- clients live in Sanford and the rides are in Sanford. And there we helped, we had 32,000 trips last year for about 1,300 people. And, and that went to 45 different businesses in Sanford. So, we're both helping people remain employed so they can pay for their housing and other, and other living expenses, but also then helping businesses and helping the economy. So, I'm not going to go through all of these different types of support. There's, there are support that you're probably familiar with, but a couple more I did want to highlight. One is bricks and mortar. A lot of the housing stock in Maine is old. And so, for, particularly for seniors that have been living housing for a long time, that housing may be crumbling around them. So, we're able to come in and do home repair, weatherization, heating system replacement so folks can afford to stay in their homes. Really important program. And then the other one I want to mention is just affordable healthcare. The folks cannot work, cannot attend school, cannot do, live independently if they're not healthy. And so, we offer at Nassau Healthcare, we offer primary care and behavioral healthcare and dental care. And about 2,300 Sanford residents are patients at Nassau Healthcare every year. So, again, it's this combination. We have a large number of folks, a large percent of folks who have households in Sanford who are living below that basic needs line and they depend on the, this type of housing in order to, to be able to afford housing and then other supports as well to help stretch their dollars. So, I will pass it on to Steve now, I think, for the final section of the presentation.
So, because you all paid attention last year to the 18-slide presentation we did on tax increment financing, we don't have to repeat that. So, for the viewing public that, that didn't enjoy that presentation last year, tax increment financing is provided to us as municipalities by state law, Title 38, Chapter 206, there it is. It is a, it is the most powerful economic development tool that the city enjoys. So, we have the opportunity to partner, it's a public-private partnership, such as what we, we did with Reincor on the housing project across the street. It allows for the new development when it's paying new taxes. So, the property prior to going into tax increment financing, that taxation stays with the general taxation as it always has. When there's a new development, you have the opportunity to capture the new value that's, that's built there. And for the limited number of tools that we have, you're able to use a portion of that or up to all of that to help incentivize the project. For those projects that are important to the city, that the council is viewing, such as housing, I believe Sanford was on the cutting edge, the first to use an economic TIF for housing. All other communities were using housing TIFs. There's a major difference in those. So, you can use a portion of that newly-generated revenue to go through what's called the credit enhancement agreement that addresses that gap, that funding gap that, that's typically there in this extraordinary times of, of billing expense and labor expense. It looks at that revenue-to-debt service ratio and, and it addresses that by giving a portion of the taxation back that may close that gap to make it an economically viable project. So, let's quickly jump to the, to the summary here. As far as the summary to date, the city has put tax increment financing into senior and affordable housing, the 66 units of that. The senior housing market rate, 18 units. ADA specifically accessible, 10 units. Skilled care, 94 units. So, one, one Summer Commons is a 94 skilled care unit facility in Sanford that we have tax increment financing in that. There's 171 units in market rate housing. We have 36 units in affordable workforce. Those are the units that are being constructed across the street currently. And we have affordable workforce housing, 128 pending. We have market rate of 100 units pending. So, to date, we've approved and or had, had under construction, nearly completed, 395 units. There's 228 that are pending. Those are some of the major mills that are still sitting out there. So, once those pending come in, we will, we will have had 623 units that the city has partnered with the private sector in order to entice and have constructed in our Next, we wanted to look at the housing data. So, we haven't had this before. This is an examination, this is pulled from our assessing database. We went through, we, we, Larissa and, and our assessor, went through the last five years' worth of data from what was called the, the LA4 report, looking at the number of living units that fall into these major categories. So, we have the single-family residential units, you here should refer to those as SFRs. We have the eight-plus unit apartment complexes, we have duplexes, four to seven units as, as another category, manufactured home, three units, so we have tries, and then we have the condos as standalone condominiums. So, you can see that as far as growth in our community, map that out here, you can see, here's the coalition of, of that dataset. You can see our, our highest number of units as a category is in the single-family residential. We've known this for quite a while, it's the bulk of our assessed database as well. Sanford enjoys one of the highest levels of, of single-family residential homeownership in, in York County. The next highest category is the eight-plus units and we're seeing, that's where we're seeing our largest amount of growth on a per-unit basis because some of the larger mill complexes are getting ready to come on board. So, when you're bringing on 100 units to a time, you really make a significant change there. You can see the duplexes over the last five years have been relatively stable, only eight units gained overall. The four to seven units, approximately 60 units gained over the last five years. Manufactured homes relatively stable, only a net change of three. The three units have actually gone down, so some of those have been converted and/or have gone away. And then a slight change of about 69 units for the condominiums themselves. So, where are we at currently? Again, the pie chart shows us that about 57% of our living units is in single-family residential homes, about 10% percent are in duplexes, 3% in the three units, 7% in the smaller apartment units, the four to seven, 16% in the eight-plus, and that's growing dramatically for us. About 2% in condos and about 5% of our population lives in manufactured homes. We know that that's a public discussion that's ongoing now, that their lot rents are becoming exorbitantly high. I've received a couple of emails on that from other communities today. There's a number of communities, they're all grappling with what to do and how to address it, so more on that to come. So, looking at the total growth in, in housing units, you can see we've gone from just over 9,600 units to now 10,500. I think the important part of this graph is the year-to-year growth. You can see from '21 to '22, we gained 231 approved units, that these, these are occupancy permits, 112 the next year, 82 the year after, and 377. And I expect to see that type of a number over the next couple of years because of the large projects that are coming on board. So, when you, when you look at that, we've, we've averaged just over 200 units per year for each of the last five years, which I think is very significant. So, then for the first time, we're, we're trying to relate what's projected, what's our projected need and how does that relate? So, the only, the only insight that we had into this was from a, a market analysis that RKG did for us with the comprehensive plan. Part of the economic analysis, my, my belief is, on the numbers that we're seeing here, because we are vastly outpacing this, is that it was based upon the new jobs that they're anticipated to be created wholly in Sanford and the number of housing units that you're going to have to have to address those. But, that being said, they, they looked at the population from 21,982 in 2020 was going to increase to 23,702. That's about a 7.8% increase in that 20-year span. They're projecting that we need 477 owner units and 240 rental units or 717 units in that same time period. And that, when you take the population by the units, it's, it's the typical household size that we see of 2.3. So, that number carried forward. So, for comparison, Sanford has an increase of 802 living units in the past five years in our datasets. If you combine our single-family residential and condos into the ownership units that they're talking about, we had an increase of 213 units compared to the 477 over the that 20-year period, but we've achieved that, more than half of that in five. And then we've had 589 rental units completed in the same five-year period where they projected we needed 477. So, we're doing extremely well in that, that piece. So, I think in summary, Sanford has and continues to make great strides in housing, in our housing development. It's been a, it's been a strong community vision for the need and embrace of the city's organized growth and partnerships across agencies and the private sector investments that are producing the results that we described here tonight. With that, I would open the floor up for questions. Questions or observations or general comments?
And Larissa, do we have anybody online with questions?
No questions online.
Yes. Oh, could you introduce yourself too? And you might have to come up to one of our mics. Because we're televised. Now you have two mics.
Now I feel professional. Hi, everybody. My name is Jeff Hassel. I'm the new exec director at Habitat York County. I took over for Amy Nucci, who's been boosted up to work with Habitat all over Maine, but it's really my pleasure to come here and just hear the, what's happening in Sanford because Habitat is working in Sanford. We talked about Beaver Hill. We're looking to meet with Jamie in a few weeks to talk about Island Avenue. And then there's some other prospects as well. So, we're just really excited to be working with you in the community and we expect that to continue. So, thanks for just letting me say a couple of words. It's been my pleasure to be here tonight.
Well, we're glad you're here and welcome.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Steve, just a couple of quick questions about the last slide that you had. The population change, is that 21,000, and it says 2020, so I assume that was at that kind of base level. Is that 21,900 extra per year? That seems like a lot. Or is that, how is that? Can you, can you re-explain exactly what those numbers are and how that relates to what, at least to me, looks like we're kind of outstripping our growth rate maybe based on the... on the, the number of units we're seeing?
So RKG was indicating that we're going to have a population growth of about, of about 1,700 people, right? And then they expressed the number of living units in there, so 1,700, 717 total living units. So that's the average household of 2.3. So that's not different, different from what we see in our numbers currently. But again, my understanding, that was for the economic growth confined in Sanford. When you look at Sanford, also when you go in that, that economic detail, Sanford exports more workers than we import for workers. So for example, you know, Pratt &amp; Whitney, Port St. Louis Shipyard, thousands upon thousands of people that, that go there, that live here in Sanford. Because we still continue to be one of the, the most affordable places for people to live and we're building the type of quality housing that they want to have for the income levels that they're making there. I remember from the economic analysis that just recently came out, that's, there's about $54 million of payroll that comes to us just from the shipyard workers here in Sanford. So what you're seeing in our numbers, we're exceeding those projections that are, were put forward by RKG. So I need to get a better handle on what their numbers really wrapped around. But we're also seeing, there's no, been no diminishment in the demand for housing here, which I think is reflective of the people that live, live in Sanford that work at the, in the defense industries in the immediate surrounding area.
Thank you. Yeah, I've, you know, I grew up in Sanford, but I've always pretty much worked outside of Sanford, so I, I understand that. The other question I had was, so we have all these different groups that presented and thank you, everyone. What I didn't see, except for one slide that kind of alluded to it, was, you know, funding sources. I, I suspect most of like the Section 8 and these different assistance things are tax-based. So I'd, I'd be interested in seeing what those numbers are and, you know, whether it's state, federal, what, what if anything's coming from, you know, the Sanford budget. I think some of these we do provide some funding for. So that's something, that's a piece that I'd like to see that I didn't, didn't see in the slide deck. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Jonathan. Anyone else? Okay, seeing none. I'm going to adjourn this meeting, but the council, we have another meeting back in our quiet little room there. Thank all the presenters tonight, did a fantastic job. And I like to point out, Carter was the only one who knew to introduce the next speaker. Thank you, Carter.
[laughing].